I think you call the meeting to order. At this time, I'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, so I ask for Councilman Cabo to leave us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd ask Chief Curran to please lead us in prayer. Chief?
Today, February 6th, we remember the birthday of our 40th President Ronald Reagan, a president to call the voice for every generation. In his words, we make this prayer: "Dream that we will travel the road ahead with Liberty's lamp guiding our steps and opportunity's arms heading our way. To remember always those who serve us in the military. We will always be proud, always be prepared, so that we may always be free. That we resolve, all young Americans, will always find there is a city of hope in a country that is free, and let us resolve that they will say our generation did keep our faith with our God. We did act worthy of ourselves, and that we did protect and pass on lovingly that shining city on a hill." In closing, America needs God more than God needs America. If we ever forget that we are one nation under God, we will be a nation no longer. Tonight, we pray that God sends His wisdom on us as we do the people's business. Amen.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
McMahon, Negashet, Johnson, Trombetta, Caladino, Perkins, Disconny, Shinise, Estesito, Sadi, Cabo, Rotello, Diggs, Taisho, Arkanti, Curran, Knapp, Levy, Riley, Seaberry, Stanley.
There being 21 present and zero absent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. The first 30 minutes of each council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I'd ask that any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening, please do so about an item that is specifically on the agenda. You also must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city to address the council. And I'd ask a couple of housekeeping things, so we can keep things moving. We appreciate if you didn't applaud, because that just slows the process down, and we only have 30 minutes, and we don't want to try to get as many people up as we can that want to address the council, so if you applaud, it just slows things down. And try to be as direct and concise to the point as you can. We're going to start first to ask anybody who wants to address the council about any item, with the exception of item 29, which is ICE access. I know there's a lot of people who want to talk about that, but there's just a few people about another item, so we'll have them come up first and move things along. And try to get just one person to speak if there's a particular issue. So, Mr. Brooks, your hand was up.
Come before you to speak about item 13, which is the petition to cease the project on Cannondale Drive, followed by the survey vote, which was six negative, one positive, the negatives being six against continuing the Cannondale Drive project. These decisions were agonizing and not taken lightly. I understand the council didn't understand that people thought very deeply before they turned down a project, which some of us have worked 15 years on, some of us three and a half years on. It's a tragedy that it had to turn out this way, and it's not the venue to discuss why it happened. At the last minute, I became aware there's a letter which is improperly before you that is inaccurate. I hope that won't sway you. We have a clear majority, about 85, 87 percent, who had to vote against continuing the project. There were a number of factors, and if the council wants to ask me why, they can, but please just take our vote for what it is that we had to make the decision to turn down further work on the project. It was not taken lightly, I have to say that, and it's very sad for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Also, please give your name and address for the record when you come up to speak. Anybody want to speak about an item, with the exception of the ICE access program? Any other business in here that's not related to ICE access? Sir?
I don't know, you started off with saying you have to be a Danbury resident. I'm not. I was born in Danbury.
Are you a taxpayer, sir?
Huh?
Are you a taxpayer?
No, but I'm representing St. James Church.
I can't let you speak, I'm sorry. Got to be a taxpayer and/or resident. Thank you, though. And you're welcome to contact the council after the meeting for any concerns you might have. Any other item besides ICE access?
I'd be very brief. I actually wanted to talk on two things. The first one was item number 26, the two acres of land. It's kind of misleading in the minutes here, it says acquisition of the two acres on Rockville. It's actually a sale. I find it kind of unusual that we just went through an open space bond to try to get the 6.6 million for open space, but yet here we are going to sell off two acres of land as opposed to acquiring more land, which is what I thought our goal was in this city. In this neighborhood, we also have three other parcels that are also owned by the city. This parcel is on the beginning of 150, 200 acre of all open land. So I find it kind of unusual that we are selling off this land rather than acquiring land in that area. Also, that the price that we're selling it at, $20,000 for two acres of land in Danbury seems a little bit outrageous, especially considering that we just spent $200,000 for 2.9 acres off of Terrywild. So I am against this, I am for open space, I feel that we should be buying open space rather than selling. My second thing that I wanted to talk on, I don't know if I could do it now, was on the ICE access.
We're going to open it back up, Ken, but if we can get to you, we will.
I can come back up?
If we can get to you, we will. Okay? We have a lot of people that want to speak on that. Anybody else want to speak about any other item besides ICE access? Mrs. Brooks, I think we got the Brooks family set on Canada. I think we know where you're coming from. Okay. Is Mr. Legardo on the agenda tonight relating? Okay, okay. Okay, Mrs. Brooks. This is in relation to what item on the agenda? Okay.
Just for the record, when Ed Legardo is not familiar with the common council procedures because he is not a resident of Danbury, however, when the six homeowners abutting Cannondale Drive petitioned the common council to start the road improvement project, Ed Legardo was the warden of St. James Episcopal Church, and he represents... What's...oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't know the procedure. And he represents two Cannondale Drive, so Marjory Brook for Cannondale Drive. So if you feel that it is appropriate for him to speak, I would appreciate letting him speak. Thank you.
Okay, that was a stretch. Ivan, anything but ICE access? We're going to get to that in a second. Okay.
Good evening. Ivan Alcimay to Midfield Road, item number 24. I am here to ask all of you to support the film festival in Danbury. This is great for downtown Danbury. It's a great initiative. It will bring businesses downtown. It is economically sound for Danbury. Please support that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ivan. With that, we're going to move to...anybody wish to address the ICE access program? That pretty much will cover the rest of the stuff. Remember, you have to be a resident and taxpayer. If you already spoke at one of the first two meetings, we'd appreciate if you wait to the end, because we want to let other people who maybe have an opinion on this issue be able to address the council. So, ma'am, your hands all the way up in the back with the glasses. Come on up. Just your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Renata Amaral, 221 Main Street in Danbury. I'll be very brief. One of the things that I wanted to discuss tonight is basically what I have already written to all the council members, which is to really think hard before you cast your vote. I received several responses already, and I appreciate you taking the time to reply to my efforts. And one of the things that caught my attention was when some of the council members said, "We'll do what's best for Danbury." Well, we are Danbury. All these people that are gathered here today, we become part of the bulk of people that pay taxes and that add to the business and to the culture of Danbury. We're not all criminals. We like you to take consideration and respect for the 21 years that I have been a taxpayer in Danbury, for consideration for all the people that do not break the laws or they are desperately, desperately trying to become documentized in the state of Connecticut. I further like to say, again, we are Danbury. We are part of the culture and the diversity that is here. I can't imagine my business being anywhere else, and I don't want to be forced to take it elsewhere. I believe I'm speaking for most of the people here today. I don't want to have Danbury lose any more revenue than it will, because if we lose our businesses, Danbury will suffer. Thank you.
The gentleman in the red baseball hat, come on forward. And then pastor, pastor, you'll be next, okay? Just name and address for the record.
Good evening. Julio Cantal, 19 Longcrest Road in Danbury. I'd like to address the council tonight. I emailed the council a few times also, trying to explain what's the hardship of the approval of this law at this moment. I'm a real estate broker. I lived in Danbury for 15 years, and already have seen many, many properties vacant at this point. And we're going to see a lot more properties vacant if that law being approved tonight. So I plead and ask the council to have a really, really good thinking about this law, because that's going to affect, it's not only affected directly, but psychologically affect all the members of this community. Not only the illegal immigrants that are here that this law intend to affect, but it's going to affect the other citizens or residents of this town. So I plead and ask the council to rethink about this, rethink about the properties that are going to be vacant in the near future, and the economy of this town, which is, it's our town. We love this town. Thank you.
Pastor?
Good evening. My name is Ophir DiBarros. I'm the pastor from the Oldest Baptist Church in 234 Main Street.
Just your address, sir, pastor.
1 Buckskin Heights Drive, Danbury. My point here is that we have created a very great unrest in the city, a climate of fear that I'm feeling my congregation and all the community. And my point that we have to do something very objective and clear, and you are responsible for the city, as mayor and selectmen, members of the council, you need to do something to calm the people, to bring peace and justice, as we have done in the pledge of allegiance, just and liberty and equality for all. And my point, my proposal was for you that do immediately constitute a community, a commission, something like that, group that can study why you are coming to this point, and we can do a social covenant to wait for the reform of the immigration that certainly will come with the next president of the United States of America, if you hope that. And while this is happening, perhaps one year more, or Holy Potter, two years, then we must stay as we are. We not have to create a climate of rest and doing every measure like this. So my proposal to you, my suggestion, my quest, that you hold this law or wait this all, together with the law, add some clear status or items in the agenda or the law that we can really walk together, city and all the residents, all people who are here to bring social justice, to be a climate of peace to the city. If we continue on this problem, this will create a very difficult situation for us to live here. So I am asking you as a pastor, as a racial person, and the Bible tells us that God says that you do not oppress the alien person, the foreign who are in your land. Leviticus, chapter 19. And my prayer to God and my request to you is this: Let's do some objective steps. What you can do to solve this problem that was created by you with this law. I know that we need to take care of the criminals, of the gangs, of the frauds, everything that the law is correct in this perspective. But the problem is not the law in his objectively, but what is under the law, the climate, understanding the fear. If you signal to all the people of the community, we want to do a social covenant, and all people who are under comment can wait and live here peacefully until the reform is done, this is the best thing that you can do. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, right there, your hand up in the glass. Yes.
Common Council, I'm Patricia Weiner, and I live at 150 Brushy Hill Road in Danbury. The people that you are planning to hound out of their homes come to Danbury, come to this country, to work hard, to earn a living, to support their families, because they are having trouble supporting their families in their own countries. Because the farmers in countries like Mexico cannot earn a living, because our government is subsidizing our farmers, and they cannot compete with our farmers, because we have violated the NAFTA agreement. So we are doing one wrong upon another wrong in order to achieve what? I'm not quite sure. What we are achieving is fear. And I know about that, because I grew up in South Africa, where people were doing exactly what you want to do in this country, in this town, where the police came and hounded people out of their homes and sent them back to where the government thought they ought to be living, because they didn't think they ought to be living in the place where they came to earn a living. And it created a terrible atmosphere. People couldn't speak to other people. People were afraid. People were living in constant fear. Not only the people who were afraid of the police, but the other people also. I was not subject to that, because I was a white person in South Africa, but I was afraid also, and everybody in this town will be affected. We will all be affected economically also, because the immigrants in this town creates a huge advantage to the economy of this town. And if we lose our immigrant population, we will lose the character of Danbury, and we will lose our economic base. And I think you ought to think very carefully about that. And I think one last thing that you have to think about is you have to think about how very, very lucky every one of us is who is here legally, and who is born in this country, and who hasn't had to face the problems that these people are facing. And that is only because you were lucky enough to be born here. And you have to think about if you weren't that lucky, and if you were born in a country where you could not support your family, you would probably be doing exactly the same thing. So don't prevent that from these people. Thank you.
Folks, as I told you, if you continue to applaud, less people are going to have an opportunity to speak, and I think people have things they want to say, so we need to keep the program moving. Amelia?
Ladies and gentlemen, and members of the board, and Mr. Mayor Barnes, and thank you for giving me the chance. I'm Emily Furness from 16 Bill Drive. I own Furness Food Store for 33 years. I've been a taxpayer in Danbury for all this time and live here for 45. I have two beautiful big boys, which everybody knows and I'm sure like me. And we love all of you. And I have some apartments on Killa Street, Liberty Street, and Austin Street, and at this time, everybody left. I have eight empty apartments. I don't know how I'm going to pay the mortgage, tax, and everything else, and I have to give all the money back. I have $2,000 in the bank to pay mortgage, tax, and all of that, and heat, because I pay the heat. I cannot shut the heat off for the rest of the tenants at 42 Killa Street. So I really appreciate if we can touch your hearts, and God bless you all, and we'll all love you, and we love Danbury. That's the reason we stay here forever, and I hope, I have five grandchildren, which they all be here, I hope, with all this help. And God bless you. Have a nice evening, and we all love you.
Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mark Barton, and all the group that formed the Common Council in Danbury. My name is Luis Bautista. I'm living in 1 Dogwood Drive in Danbury. And also, I have a business, a small business, but still it's a business in Danbury. My name of the business is El Millenio, which is in North Street. And also, I have a few properties also in the North Street. And I came to put this in, to tell everybody in this meeting tonight, especially the council, the common councils of this city, to take in consideration of this law, because this is going to hurt our business. They're still already hurt, but it's going to still hurt more the business, and also the revenue for the business is going to be weak in a few months later. I don't expect to be too long until that happens, because that already started. A lot of people leave the town, as many apartments, as many houses for rent, because the people are scared. We, all the people here tonight, we are not criminals. That's why we came over here to show the face and to please tell everybody here in the Common Council to take in consideration, because we don't want to make mistakes like other people did in other towns or in other cities or states. So my question and my opinion is, can please take in consideration this new law? Thank you.
My name is Don Troyano. I live at...sorry, my voice is going. I played hockey last night. Don Troyano, 80 Hillendale Road, Danbury. I also own a business here in town that frankly isn't affected by this. I'm interstate, doesn't much matter to me. But what does matter to me is the economy.
Just speak into the mic just a little closer, because I know your heart.
Thanks a lot. What does matter to me is the economy of Danbury. I grew up in this town. I spent better than 500 hours researching what is going to happen when you pass this. You have the fiduciary responsibility to legislate in an economically sensible manner, regardless of how you feel about immigration, okay? Does anybody here know what that is? Economically responsible manner means you are about to push 20,000, by his estimates, not mine, 20,000 people that are consumers out of this community in the next 90 to 120 days. All right? I just want to give you an idea of how much they consume in the course of a year. $250 million a year, not my estimates. This comes from the Department of Labor and Statistics, okay? So I didn't come up with these numbers randomly, all right? I'm not a great public speaker, although I think it's important that I speak tonight. Most notably, you know, once this happens, I brought up, and I think I've written all of you letters, about a city called Riverside, New Jersey. I'm hoping some of you read that letter. This city enacted legislation no different from what we're doing here tonight. That city is virtually bankrupt, all right? We need to think about what we're going to do here. I do not want to see the city I grew up in, all right, commit economic suicide. Please, I'm begging you for you and for me and for all the people out here to save the city. Before you jump into this thing, what I'm proposing very simply is that we do what we asked the guy in the Dunkin' Donuts, was going to put a little drive-through in, and the city required him to do an economic impact study.
Don't go there, Don, not in the Dunkin' Donuts.
Why not? The point is, he asked for it, fair enough. And what I'm saying is, the city of Danbury should order an economic impact study prior to proceeding with this very, very risky legislation you are about to put your names to, and we are going to have to pay for it if you guys are wrong, because I know I'm right, and you will see the impact in the near term. So legislate responsibly, move ahead carefully. That's all I ask. Have a good day.
Please, any cell phones, just be careful not to let them go off. If you could put them on vibrate. Ma'am, all the way in the back.
Good evening, Mr. Barton. Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jose Mary Grandford, and I live at 19 Faith Lane in Danbury, Connecticut. I'm here to plead to all of you councils to take a look around this room right now. And if you are not going to be impacted with the passing of this law, may you raise your hand. May you raise your hand if you don't know that, you know, in the morning, when you're passing by Dunkin' Donuts to grab your coffee or any other coffee shop around the downtown area, if that's going to be open again. This law is going to impact us greatly. We are all here to ask for a better future, not only for ourselves, but also for the ones that we love, our families, our children. And I would hate to see, I work for a bank, and I would hate to see my clients having to leave and abandon this country out of fear. America was always known as the home...I'm sorry, sir. America was always known to be the land of the free and the home of the brave. I believe that each one of us immigrants here in this country are really brave, because we know the difficulties each one of us here face in order to obtain a legal documentation. Ladies and gentlemen, be the one to change the laws of the Constitution of the United States. Be the ones to help us, immigrants, all of us, to make a better living, not only to you, but to all of us. Laws need to be created. Let's think about that. You are all brilliant people, and we all are counting with your support and your help. Many of us here that are legal in this country, we put you where you are, because we know that each one of you have a better decision and are acting on our behalf. So I please, I beg you, and I ask you, to look deep down inside your heart and see how can you, you are going to be affected, not only yourselves, but also your family. Please, take seriously a deep consideration in how this law is going to affect you. in how this law is going to affect not only you and I, but also all of our children and our children's children to come. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time. Sir?
My name is Edney Lima. I live at Ninety-Five Park Avenue, apartment number nineteen.
A little closer here.
First name is Edney, E-D-N-E-I. Last name is Lima, L-I-M-A. I live at Ninety-Five Apartment, Ninety-Five Park Avenue, apartment number nineteen, Danbury, Connecticut, oh-six-eight-one-zero. I just want to... See, I've been in this country for twelve years, and most of people here know me as a Danburi hero. The mayor of Danbury already handed me two plaques for saving five American citizens in this town. I just want to say that if I was not here twelve years ago, would be five people, they're American citizens, that would be dead already. That's all. I just want to give my little speech and ask you guys just to think about what you guys want to do with the town. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel from Twenty-two George Street, Danbury, first floor, right around the corner here. We heard all the economical, all the stats...
Daniel, can we just get your last name?
Daniel Ribero, R-I-B-E-I-R-O. Okay? We know all the economic stats about the impact of this law passing and everything. And there's much more to that. I have a question here. Just judging by the last names, I see on these plaques here, before anybody started their professional lives or adult lives, imagine if this happened to the parents or grandparents of you guys. Would any of you guys be here today? No, I don't think so. What we're trying to do here, there are many misconceptions about us immigrants. We're not criminals. It's not about crime. It's about breaking the law. It's about survival. A lot of you guys don't know what goes on in the lives of people that risk, basically risk their lives to fight death, to jump up borders, to come to this country. Would you guys consider giving your lives or anything? I know there are many parents here that got kids. I believe that the only people in this, on this planet, that you guys would give your lives up to for your kids, that's what the parents are doing. We're risking jumping borders, going through rivers, snakes, animals, everything, to give a better life to the kids. We're not here to play. We're not here to mess anybody's country up. We're not here to break any laws. We're just trying to have life with peace and dignity in a future where we can see our kids growing, where we can see something better for us. Because unfortunately, where we came from, where we were born, unfortunately, we did not have that. So, no one's here to... We're not here to cause any havoc or play around, which cause any trouble. We're here just to looking for a better chance. And the reason why we're illegals is not because we want to be illegals. This country is making us illegals. We do not have any chance, we haven't had a chance, to get a driver's license. Insurance. Some places in the United States, even medical attention. We've got people dying in hospital beds because they illegal, and they can't get insurance for that. Is that the right way to go about triggering immigration in this country? I see in the foreheads of people here ashes, which means a lot of people here believe in God. And we made a prayer, we had a prayer before we started, "A country under God." Ask yourselves, is it really true? Because the word of God says totally different from what you guys are acting right now. I know that's something that has to be done. I totally agree with you, Mayor, and everybody here. That's something that has to be done. But before you guys try to do something, think. Because we see on the TV a lot of medications for a lot of incurable diseases that seem perfect, but you should think about the side effects are worse than the effects of the medication. So, think about the side effects of this law passing. Think about Danbury last twenty thousand people. Think about Danbury last two-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars each year in its budget. Is that worth it? Is it worth it? All we asking here is for a chance. That's it. Nothing else. Because we're humans too. And what we want is a better life, and we want to be part of the country. Because this country was built by immigrants. So, that's what we want to do, keep this country going. Look at the way the country is right now. Instead of doing what we're doing to immigrants, let's adjust the real ills of the country that's bringing this country down. I'm proud to be who I am. I'm proud to be Brazilian, and I'm proud to be here. I'm going to school right now, and I'm proud to graduate and some in a few years serve this country. Because this country gave me opportunity, when I got here as a kid, to go to school and to graduate and to go to college, something that might not be possible if I stayed back in my country, where education is low, violence is unbelievable. Just a second, the war in Iraq. We've got over three thousand deaths right now. In my country, the four years, five years that the wars been going on, two-hundred-thousand people died. And we're not at war. You know what I'm saying? I'm not asking you guys to feel pity for us, but just give us a chance. Because that's what each and every one of us here and those people outside want, is one chance. That's all we asking, because we haven't had a chance to do anything right. We haven't had a chance to follow the law. Because since the day, even before we got here, we judged as illegals. And we haven't had a chance to prove it differently. So, please, just think. When you go home tonight, look yourself in the mirror, look at your kids sleeping, think that somebody's family you guys could be destroying through this law. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cavill.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You could move to waive the reading of the report. Motion made by Mr. Shinisi is a second to waive the reading of the report. Seeing none, then motion fails for lack of a second. Please proceed, Mr. Cavill.
ICE Access, Common Council Committee of the Whole. Minutes of the Common Council Committee of the Whole held on January fourteenth, two thousand and eight. Council President Cavill called the Common Council Committee of the Whole to order at seven P.M. The members were recorded as follows. President McMahon, Nagashet, Johnson, Trumbetta, Calendrino, Perkins, Visconti, Chiannese, Esposito, Sadi, Cavill, Seaberry, Rotello, Diggs, Tyshult, Arkanti, Curran, Knapp, Levy, Riley, and Stanley. There are twenty-one members present, zero absent. Mayor Mark Bauton, Chief Allen Baker, Deputy Corporation Counsel Laszlo Pinter, and Chief Counsel Robert Yaman were also present to be available to provide information to the council. Also in attendance were Attorney John Marley from ICE, Deputy Chief Taren Shanahan, Detective Captain Mitchell Weston, Detective Lieutenant James Fisher, and Captains Bob Miles, Tom Wendell, and Dan Mulvaney. The Honorable Mayor Mark Bauton opened the discussion by giving an overview of the background of his letter dated December twenty-sixth, two thousand and seven to the Common Council. Mayor Bauton stated that ICE currently has a presence in the city. He also stated that utilization of the current process to form an agreement with ICE is consistent with past practice. The mayor further recommended authorizing the chief to enter into an agreement with ICE, a memo of understanding, M-O-U, to utilize the ICE access for several of the police officers to receive training. This would be an extra level of training provided free of charge by the federal government. The council is authorized to opt out of this agreement at any time and to terminate or adjust the agreement with ICE at any time. Attorney Pinter advised that ICE access has been understudied since October two thousand and seven and that there have been preliminary discussions with Chief Baker. The charter and code of ordinances allow the Common Council to enter into federal agreements. Past practice and policy establishes the process to enter into these types of agreements. The Immigration and Naturalization Act itself gives the authority to negotiate, execute, and enter into these agreements. Chief Baker introduced the senior police department staff, President and Attorney John Marley from ICE. The chief gave a brief overview of the research he has conducted on this matter. It was his recommendation that the city make application and enter into a formal partnership with ICE with the focus on crime, gangs, organized crime, document fraud, drug trafficking, human trafficking, identity and benefit theft, and worksite investigation would be the main areas of concentration. He stated that the police department currently has a number of formal and informal relationships with other law enforcement agencies and that this would add another layer of protection to the residents of Danbury. He further stated that there are significant benefits associated with the partnership with ICE, which includes training, supervision, and access to ICE and Homeland Security databases. A complaint process would be in place to ensure that there is no abuse and that this partnership is in the best interest of the city of Danbury and the police department. Mr. Cavill opened the floor for discussion. Several Common Council members asked questions regarding database access, benchmarks, community outreach, economic factors, modifications to the M-O-U, U.S. government grants, search warrant process, and fingerprinting evaluation. Mr. Seaberry moved to recommend that the Common Council authorize the police chief to enter into an agreement with the federal government to permit the participation of the ICE access, seconded by Mrs. Stanley. Further discussion followed, in particular interrogation of non-English speaking persons, identification of undocumented people, source of material, clarification of arrests without warrant training, immigration investigations, and chain of command. Mr. Perkins moved to amend the motion to require the final M-O-U be presented to the council prior to approval, seconded by Mr. Rotello. Discussion followed on the amendment motion. Mr. Sadi inquired for the record if the proposed amendment is to require the document to go back to the council, but also allows the negotiation to proceed as proposed in the ordinance. Mr. Perkins answered in the affirmative. A roll call vote was taken on the motion to amend as follows. Perkins, Visconti, Chiannese, Esposito, Sadi, Rotello, Diggs, Levy, Riley in favor, McMahon, Nagashet, Johnson, Trumbetta, Calendrino, Cavill, Seaberry, Tyshult, Arkanti, Curran, Knapp, and Stanley voted against. Motion failed with twelve no and nine yes. Mr. Seaberry called the question on the main motion. Ms. Tyshult seconded. A roll call vote was taken as follows. McMahon, Nagashet, Johnson, Trumbetta, Calendrino, Cavill, Seaberry, Tyshult, Arkanti, Curran, Knapp, Levy, Riley, and Stanley in favor, Perkins, Visconti, Chiannese, Esposito, Sadi, Rotello, and Diggs voted against. Motion passed with fourteen yes and seven no. A roll call vote was taken on the main motion to make recommendations to the Common Council as follows. McMahon, Nagashet, Johnson, Trumbetta, Calendrino, Visconti, Chiannese, Esposito, Sadi, Cavill, Seaberry, Diggs, Tyshult, Arkanti, Curran, Knapp, Levy, Riley, and Stanley voting yes, Perkins and Rotello voting no. Motion passed with nineteen voting yes and two voting no. Mr. Sadi moved to adjourn at nine-thirty, seconded by Mr. Rotello. Motion passed by unanimous vote. Respectfully submitted, Joseph Cavill.
Mr. Cavill, what's your pleasure, counsel? Councilman Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this point, I'd like to move to accept the recommendation of the Ad-Hoc Committee as a whole and authorize Police Chief Baker to enter into agreement with the federal government to permit the participation of the ICE access.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Councilman Stanley. Discussion. Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a very difficult situation, and I truly feel in my heart very, very sorry for anybody that might be targeted by this access. I'm going to preface my words with the following that I was unfortunate in my early years. By the time I was three years old, I had lost my parents, and consequently, I was in eight foster homes by the time I was twelve. Now, it's very embarrassing in some ways to say that, but that's the way life was. And I was on my own at fourteen years old. The reason I say that is because, believe me, ladies and gentlemen, in my heart, I truly feel for those that are the downtrodden and those that have to work for upward mobility within this great nation. So, when I give you some of my thoughts on this, I hope you consider that I'm speaking from a position where I truly understand where people that struggle, what you really have to do, and believe me, I lived it as a young guy. First of all, as I said, this is a very difficult situation. And I had, since I've been in the caucus, I have agonized with what I would do. And ultimately, I came up with the feeling that after Chief Baker spoke, after many other people spoke, regarding how this would be used. And I looked at it as strictly as a tool only for those that are criminals and no one else. And therefore, I put myself there too, damn it if... Excuse me. If I'm a criminal, then grab all of me too. And the second part of it is that, under the Constitution of the United States, the Fourth Amendment, we all in this great land are protected, are protected by that, the Constitution, that is so important to all of us. And I know in my heart that the police, the police chief and all the officers and the non-commissioned officers, they too will adhere. They too will adhere to the rule of the land, which is based upon the Constitution and, in this case, the Fourth Amendment. I mean, you just can't, you can't go out there and just begin to do whatever you're going to do. It's strictly a thing for those that might commit a particular crime. On the other side of the coin, I realize that this causes a lot of anxiety, and believe me, ladies and gentlemen, it causes a lot of anxiety on both sides. And I truly feel the passion of those that are seated here tonight facing us, and I empathize with each and every one of you. Therefore, what I had proposed, and I think it's a wonderful thing, I had proposed in the last meeting that we would get together, and I would be the first to volunteer my time to head a task force or a huge committee made up of all ethnic groups, all people who live in this great city, might they be community leaders or whomever, but sit down and begin to look at the situation and say, "Look, here's ICE, but that has to do strictly with the criminal element, i.e. whomever." And then work together to come up with a better understanding, a little bit better harmony between all of us. And even, you know what? I'd be more than willing to work with those that are not documented. I'd be more than willing to work with you to help you become American citizen. I think that's a wonderful thing. And so, I just want to tell you that this is not meant to, this is not meant to scare anybody. This is, we're not going to be going out there and snagging anybody. I served in Vietnam for a year and a half, believe me. I know what it is to be, you know, hit on and have to hide, because I did a lot of hiding, believe me. But, believe me, if we could get together, we can work it all out. It'll be a, it'll be a nice city the way it always is. So, even though I'm going to vote yes for it, I'm going to tell you right now, I'm going to be watching, and I'll tell you right now, if I see, if I see ever an immigrant or anybody that's being targeted unfairly under the Constitution, Fourth Amendment, by God in heaven, I'm going to stand up and I'm going to fight for it, like I did back many years ago when I was in Vietnam. I will fight for you. Thank you very much.
Okay, folks, we just want to maintain our decorum in here so that we can be heard, the council can be heard. Mr. O'Countie.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think we were, I think all citizens were given a disservice by the news media. The information, the real information in this was not disseminated amongst all the people. Let me just read one part of this. "None of the programs provide for the unbridled arrest or detention of individuals involved in day labor, housing violations, or related noncriminal activity." So, what does that leave us? So, what does that leave us with? Criminals. We're going after criminals. We're going to have more information for our police officers. It's an extra level of training. An extra level of training. We're not going after day labors, housing violators, or people related to noncriminal activity. So, we all want the criminals taken off the streets of Danbury. We have had some taken off by ICE. We do trust our police department. Both sides of this, of this, I've read, I don't know how many emails, at least 100 on this, spoken to a lot of people. No one has a problem with our police department. They've always shown professionalism, honor, and respect. I was a police officer for many years in Danbury. A few years ago, it was a great party when Brazilians won the World Cup. No one was arrested. It was, it was a very active downtown there, but I believe that we handled ourselves very well with respect for the folks, allowing some laws to be broken. Nothing too serious, though. But we were able to maintain decorum and order downtown. The police department, from the command down to the officer, deserves our respect and they have our pride. For example, look at last month. They had that incident on Lake Avenue. They showed restraint. They waited that troubled man who had the gun on Lake Avenue out. No one was hurt. Perfect, it was 100% what they did there. The police department, we have a good police department. We don't have a problem with them. Keep in mind, no unbridled arrests for these things. Only criminals. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Arcanti. Coming down, Mr. Sadi.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have to say, I do take it somewhat personally when people assume that individuals voting on this don't understand the complexity, the difficulty of the situation or what people go through with regard to immigrating to this nation. I have sat in consulates, embassies, and doctor's offices with relatives, time after time again, trying to assist them to immigrate here, literally with bullets and rocket propelled grenades going off in another section of the city. My ethnic background, I'm from the, my relatives are from the Middle East, only to have to fly home. Only to have to fly home and leave them behind. And I mentioned this to somebody and I had to bring it tonight. I kept a letter from the immigrant visa unit in the embassy in Beirut asking me if I'd like to pursue my family's petition to bring my uncle Jacob here. And I had to reply that, "No, we don't want to pursue it at this time because he died waiting for his visa." So, I do take it personally when people accuse me of not understanding. It also pains me to have to part ways with many people whom I respect, who have either spoken here tonight or who have emailed me on this issue. And as Mr. Ribier eloquently spoke, I hope I pronounced your name correctly, sir, about sacrifice. People here who have children, I know, would sacrifice their lives for their children as immigrants do to make a better life for their children. There are also individuals on this council who have sacrificed or put their lives in harm's way, in combat, some of them even being wounded. There's some people on this dais who have relatives in harm's way today. Mr. Riley, Mr. Arcanti pointed out some of the misinterpretations that are out there. And I stayed at the committee meeting that I felt that there were some hypocrites on both sides of this issue. And that was underscored to me when I received emails and direct verbal comments from some people, a limited number, but some people in the business community, who I have personally heard use derogatory and racist statements regarding immigrants, but then come to me afterwards and say that we shouldn't support this for financial reasons. I find that hypocritical. Why aren't they standing up from a philosophical standpoint of principle as opposed to purely the wallet? I was going to point something out, but I've decided in the better part of decorum not to do that. But I did receive an email in response to a chain of emails with one individual who actually indicated to me that he did not really have a problem with or even supported certain heightened visa enforcement with regard to certain people of my ethnic background. I find that hypocritical, given the request to oppose this proposal. I received an email where someone said that this proposal would allow police to, quote, "stop and interrogate any city resident." That's entirely false, not under the Fourth Amendment necessarily, but the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth Amendments as they apply to the states through the Fourteenth Amendment and the Equal Protection Clause. Not only that, but there is five decades nearly of Connecticut and US appellate and Supreme Court law, which governs the conduct of our police officers. I think that a lot of the misinformation, whether by intent, design, or just mistake or misunderstanding, has unnecessarily traumatized innocent people, people who spoke here tonight. It's traumatized business owners and it has led to some people leaving, I believe, based on misinformation, because they are being traumatized. And let's be realistic, there is a level of language barrier at times, too. We are not translating things up here in real time and that can be an unfortunate thing. It probably would be better to be able to get this information out in multiple languages in real time. I think that's something we should all work towards. I think that some of the supporters of this, no one who spoke here tonight and no one on this council, think that this is something that will drive out people from town who don't look like them or that will force people who don't speak English to speak English in front of them. Well, it won't do that and I certainly hope, it shouldn't do that and it won't do that. There are people, I think, on the other side of the issue who similarly don't believe in law enforcement on the immigration issue at all, small group, but some who are very vocal. And there does have to be a level of enforcement. This program, as I have reviewed it and many of these council members have spent hours going over it, is a tool for law enforcement to supplement current law enforcement at the local level, allow for real-time access to information that otherwise is delayed currently. It will not allow the Danbury Police Department to indiscriminately kick in doors, hump people out of their homes. In fact, I think Councilman Arcanti cited specific prohibitions within the agreement. Any actions by the police department are subject to all existing laws and constitutional protections. And in fact, there was a Connecticut judge, I believe, who was up for reappointment or promotion to a higher level, who said that the Constitution didn't apply to, I believe, to non-citizens or illegal immigrants and he was summarily scolded on that. And the case law is clear, there are the protections of the court. There is redress and there is a remedy if people abuse power. Some people have rightly pointed out the problems in other municipalities where they have enacted local laws restricting landlords from renting, trying to criminally punish people from hiring, quote, "day labors," whether they know whether they're documented or undocumented. Those laws have tried to supplant or take away federal authority and they were wrong and many of them are either being overturned, are going to be overturned or in the process of being overturned. This MOU is very distinct. It is pursuant to an act of Congress, not in contravention of congressional law. And in responding to constituents who have contacted me on both sides of this issue, but particularly those who are concerned about the MOU, I've been as candid as I think I could be. I've told them that even though they may disagree on this issue, that I know that they, as do the speakers that came here tonight, have the best interests of the city in mind and I believe that for the members of this council. I have told them that I am voting for this, but I wouldn't do it if I thought the fears that I've heard were based in reality. And it is because of watching some of my own family members go through difficulties at times and having to deal for years, first with INS and then subsequently with ICE, that I think I understand the concerns. But that being said, remember that this is not to deputize individual police officers and force them at the behest of the government to go out and do something. It is a tool that they can use as a supplement to an underlying criminal investigation, which would not include those things that Mr. Arcanti outlined. I got to say that I am impressed with the level of civility and decorum here tonight from all people on all sides of this issue. I only hope, and I think Mr. Riley outlined this, that despite the divisiveness created by this debate, that people will come together after this in a greater civil dialogue. And I think, I know Danbury as being a city that will continue to welcome people in and that we have to get accurate information out in real time and that if there is, and I know other council members on this will say the same thing, if I see a violation, I will be among the first, I don't know if I can beat Mr. Riley to the door, but to demand that there's an agenda item to review this and we have a right of rescission under the MOU, unilateral right of rescission. And so, I thank You, Your Honor, for the time to speak here tonight and to share my thoughts with my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Sadi. Anybody on this end of the dais like to speak? Anybody on this end of the dais like to speak? Mr. Seaberry.
Thank you, Your Honor. Pardon me. I want to just express the admiration I have for my colleagues up front here. We put an awful lot of hours and awful lot of discussion and debate into this and there were great ideas put out, there were great questions put out, and they were answered by our police chief and our corporate counsel and I want to thank them for all their efforts. But I also want to express myself as far as why I intend to vote for this. I believe firmly in the cultural diversity of the city of Danbury and welcome more of it. After all, we've always, everybody in the state of Connecticut, entire country were immigrants at one point or another. And we've gotten to the point where we live together, we play together, and we work together. But this, the intent of this motion tonight is merely to do, as some of my colleagues said here tonight, is to put another tool of assistance into the police department's box. But understand again, as my colleagues said, nobody has any intention of going and kicking down doors. Nobody has any intention of splitting families up. As Councilman Arcanti said, this is a ruling or this is an idea to get not necessarily illegal immigrants off the street, but the criminals from other countries. My feeling is that we can't control the borders, the city of Danbury cannot control the borders of our country. That's a federal issue. But by golly, folks, we can, we can help to maintain the safety of the people in Danbury. That's our call. That's our task as council people. And if this is something that's going to get those criminals that by whatever means possible, they got over here, and these are the criminals that I have spoken to the chief of police and I've spoken to the ICE people about, these are the criminals that have done bad things in their countries and now they're on the streets of Danbury. Ladies and gentlemen, I've got kids that are grown up and now I've got grandkids and I don't want my kids and my grandchildren in any type of fear nor do I want yours in any kind of a safety issue. And these, ladies and gentlemen, are the people that I want off the streets in Danbury. And it's for those reasons that I strongly would support this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seaberry, further discussion on this end of the dais. Mr. Rotello and then Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was moved this evening to nearly the point of tears by the eloquence that I heard, speaking, coming from the mouths of people who clearly are fairly new arrivals to the great city of Danbury. Speaking from the heart, in a language that's clearly not their first, they came here, some of them perhaps undocumented, in spite of that and in spite of their fear, came here to talk to me and to talk to the rest of the people on this dais. I have to say something. I share the optimism of the other members who have spoken on this dais this evening, that the intent of ICE access is not to round up you and your family and not to break down your doors and not to separate women from their children. That's not the intent. But we know that the road to hell is paved with good intentions and the possibility is extent with this program. Now, I asked the chief of police a couple of weeks ago some very detailed questions. They were brief. But what I needed to hear from myself was his feeling as to the importance for the police department and for him personally to push ICE forward in Danbury. And he said, and he's also said before and he's said since I spoke to him this evening, that the petition was not the chief's idea. The chief in the city of Danbury has been working with ICE access for some time now and as you know from reading the newspapers, we are on a regular basis rounding up criminals and desperadoes in Danbury and we are doing a very efficient and good job doing it. We've been doing this for some time. We have been doing this without creating schisms in our community. Now, we have a problem in this community and the problem is perhaps one of communication. And one of the problems that we have is the fact that I think, and I am partly to blame for this, that we brought this in front of the council in a fashion that was backwards. We should have spoken to you first. We should have invited you into this process and we should have had meetings with clergy. We should have reached out to the community. We should have said, "Listen, this is the situation that we find ourselves in. We find ourselves to some extent under siege and we need to perhaps, and we want to bring you in on this, we need to perhaps ramp up enforcement and we want your opinions." We didn't do that. It didn't happen that way. I tried to turn that around in October and again in January and we got some more information and the meeting was good. But unfortunately during that meeting, which was perhaps the best quasi-public hearing that I have been to in my, in my three years on the council, and then six years before that on zoning commissions, it was an excellent, I have to commend the mayor, the president of the council, and the department heads for putting that together, in particular the police department. It was an excellent meeting, but unfortunately during that meeting, we only heard from pro-Ice agenda people. We never heard from anyone who had any bad issues with this ICE access 287G, against it. And if one wanted to be a cynic, one could say that if municipal agencies were voting on ICE, they were voting against it because the nature of the penetration of the ICE marketing system with Homeland Security is extremely low. It's almost fractionally indeterminate in America. There are not a lot of municipalities that are doing it. Doesn't mean that it's not going to happen the next couple of years, but at this point, there aren't a lot of people that we can go to who've had actual experience with ICE access 287G that can talk to us about a negative experience that they actually had. Now, we've heard some other negative experiences and as was mentioned this evening by Councilman Sadi, some of these things were to some extent outside the borders of ICE access 287G. But we do have a problem in this community and the biggest problem tonight is one of communication. I will not be voting for ICE access 287G. I don't think that's a surprise to anyone here. Some of the reasons that I won't be voting for it is because I still have an issue with the MOU that I haven't seen yet. As you heard, one of the previous long item on the agenda we had tonight was the film festival and I added an amendment to that that precedes ICE, would not vote on that until we got the contract. Let's take believer in taking a look at the paperwork before we do it. There are, to make me feel a little bit better, sample MOUs out there and we've also been able to get the MOUs that have been signed by the other 34 agencies and I've looked at them. But they're all slightly different and I'm sure the one in Danbury will be to some extent a standard MOU, but it's not going to be exactly the same. And I think that doing this without signing it is premature and it's unnecessary, but here we are. We've been asked to vote on this tonight and we're going to and it's going to happen. Moving forward, I have got to take my council people at their word, I have got to take the police department at their word, that this will not lead to a witch hunt. It will be a small consolation to me that if it does, I will be able to raise my hand and say, "See, I told you so." I don't want to be able to say that. I actually want people to say to me a year from now, "Hey, Rotello, you were wrong." That's what I want to hear. I want this program to work so effectively and so perfectly and so seamlessly that there aren't roundups and that families are not broken up and that men can go to work in the morning and come home in the afternoon and not have to worry about being pulled over. I do not want that in my town, in Danbury. My family has been here since Danbury started. I am one of the descendants of the first founders of Danbury and 50 or 75 years ago, that might have meant a lot. It doesn't mean anything anymore. Nobody even knows what a first family member is. But they came here in 1684 and there's always been a modicum of pride about that because they felt they carved this city out of the wilderness and they created the trails and the roads and they built it up. And I understand that the mayor's family goes back a long way, too, and I know there are many people in here tonight that share that heritage. One thing we forget is that when we got here, people were already here. The indigenous Americans had been here for 10,000 years. The indigenous Americans have been here for 10,000 years. And many of the people that you see walking around in Danbury now who are from South America are the real descendants of the first families. They came here 10,000 years ago, their families. And we borrowed, bought, or stole this country from them, and have broken treaty after treaty after treaty from 1492 right up to 2008. And we find ourselves sitting in judgment on them, the people who preceded us here, the people who cut the trails and who fed us when we were freezing in the winters of the 1680s, and we are telling them that they can't stay here. Now, this is what I've been hearing for the last couple of weeks. Let me tell you what I heard yesterday. You know my feelings about the push poll, and my criticism of the mayor about that a couple of weeks ago, it was in the paper?
Forgot about that.
Well, and that was a genuine feeling of mine. I felt that until we get to the bottom of how Danbury feels about this, we are operating in the dark, and I have some good news for you, at least it's good news for me. There was a real poll yesterday, and the Republicans yesterday had a choice between an immigration extremist, who I consider to be Mitt Romney, and John McCain, who is on the record about this close to being in favor of immigration amnesty. There's some funds that have to be paid, but essentially if you are here, you can pay a few dollars and get what's called an H1C or H1G visa, that's different from the H1B visa, but if you're here, you pay a few bucks and you can stay another six years. It's as close to amnesty as anyone has ever heard, and we have been operating, or at least I have been operating, under an assumption that there has been a hardcore and large group of anti-immigration extremists who have taken over the dialogue in Danbury and taken over the body politic in Danbury, and their candidate lost yesterday. The candidate of moderation among the Republicans, John McCain, took every single ward in Danbury. Now, something's going to happen in November.
Try to tighten it up a little bit.
Sure. He is either going to win, or a Democrat is going to win, and the dialogue and the laws on immigration are going to change. Do not leave Danbury, stay. This is going to work, we're going to work it out together, and things are going to get better. Thank you.
I think I forgot what I was going to say. For one, I do want to say that it's unfortunate for those who are in favor of this ICE program, for those that are opposed to it, I think you're both going to be disappointed. The misinformation has been widespread, this whole issue has taken on a life of its own. I would reiterate what the Corporation Council said, though, in the handling of this issue, and that is, this could have been an administrative program initiation. It really didn't have to come to the legislative body. We do it all the time when we send our police officers for training at the FBI Academy and other agencies that we train with and affiliate with. But I do want you to know that everybody here is sincere in their deliberations and what they do as far as voting for various issues. You saw me put my good friend Wayne Shepherd through paces on $75,000. But it's about caring for the community and all the people. And I did check. Most people that know me, and I know the mayor knows me pretty thoroughly, that I tend to do my homework and try to find out as much as I can. I checked on some of the emails I received about a community in New Jersey that went belly up, or it was said to be that it went belly up the economy. Well, after looking into that community and a few calls, that community is nowhere's near what Danbury, Connecticut is. It's a community of 16 police officers and one volunteer fire department. I did check to other programs, and Elgin, Illinois, put in calls to their, where they do have, it's a community of 90,000 people, and 32% of it, population are Hispanic, are black. They have a program in place that's working just fine, no problems whatsoever. I also ran off the latest report from the U.S. Government Accountability Office, and they looked at the program. The ICE could improve in controls and helping aliens in the removal decision process, and it talks in great length about tightening up on the consideration of things such as parents and offspring, and many of the other factors involved. I look at this as an educational program. It's been blown way out of proportion, and I think that you're going to see 21 councilmen calling a special meeting if this should ever get out of control, to the point where it's disrespectful or it's illegal in the activities of the police department. But I think that some of my colleagues have quite rightly pointed out that our police department doesn't have that kind of MO. They don't do that type of thing, we don't expect it from them, and they're a good reflection of our community, because that's how we operate. I do believe we should have had a task force. Hindsight is always 50/50, but I think we should have had community leaders of representation, and recommendations should have come out of that task force, as I pointed out with my colleague sitting next to me, Bob Riley, during the committee meeting, that out of that committee, as a community, we could decide what's best for ourselves and make recommendations. This is a training program. That's all I expect from it. It's a changing society we live in, we have 16 million new arrivals. Our police department is not trained on how to handle that. They should be trained. They should know about the immigration process. So I will support it, but I will be monitoring it very closely, and I have a lot of Hispanic friends, and I have a lot of other people that are fearful of this. I don't think they should have that fear, because I think we're a better community than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. Mr. Arconci, did you want to, you did catch my eye, you're all set at this point? Okay, okay. Mrs. Diggs.
Your honor, I'm going to keep this very short. I guess I've been straddling the fence over this issue for many, many weeks, but I'm going to have to vote yes for this, because I know many of you in the audience, most of you look like me. I mean, if you notice, I'm someone of color, and I don't really think that we're going to see a witch hunt. I really, honestly, and truly don't, and I say that because you probably think that, you know, after this is implemented, that there's going to be a lot of racial profiling. Oh, I know about racial profiling, because every time I go, you know, and I go to North Carolina and I see my son, I'm pulled over. So I know a lot about racial profiling. But I'm on the common council, and that means something to me. I'm going to guarantee all of you out there, after we pass this, and I'm sure that this will pass, if I see any racial profiling, if I see anything that I think is derogatory, if I hear any name-calling, I will be the first one in Mayor Bowden's office. And I've come into his office quite often, and he knows he doesn't want to see me in his office. Secondly, in terms of approving this, I'd like to have this task force enforced immediately, immediately, and I want to be a part of it.
You, Mr. Chanis.
Thank you, your honor. Again, without trying to repeat what the other councilmen and women this evening said, but you know, when this first came to me, one of the things I'm a big favor is training. And to me, I see this ICE access program as a training tool for a police department. Now, I lived in this city for over 35, 40 years, and I have the highest respect for our police department. I never seen them act in any type of misbehavior, and I don't see that this, it'll start now with this program. Our chief of police was asked how this program would best be used, and he clearly said, it's only going to be used for the criminal activity surrounding the immigration issue. And I'm going to take his word on that. And we're all going to hold his heat to the fire here, it's been said all along the dais this evening, but I'm going to repeat what Councilwoman Diggs said. The outreach program is a key for the success of this program, not just for the ICE access issue, but other issues that affect our immigration community. And I think that needs to start, like you said, immediately, and I'd like also be part of that committee if possible too. And also that steering committee, that's also part of the MOU, needs to be started now, not to wait. I think if those programs are in place, I think a lot of the fear that many of you feel here would be addressed now, and I think that fear would probably go away. A lot of you are here this evening, and a lot of you are not fearful of the police who are right behind you. So why would that change tomorrow? I don't see that happening. You know, the fear is, I don't know where that, where's that coming from, that either you're watching too much TV, or you're reading too much in the newspaper. But take a look in your city, in this city alone, and I don't see that happening. The other question here is the economic factor that was also brought up. Well, you know, I agree that the downtown does have an economic issue, and it's not just an immigration issue. And I think the mayor did have a task force that's going to look at the downtown, maybe some of you here would like to be part of that task force, so call the mayor's office and ask, can I be part of that task force? And I also asked Economic Development Wayne Shepherd if he would also look into the issue as well, to stay on top of that issue, of the economic of our downtown. Also, the council needs to know this information, and we need to keep hearing from the community. I mean, I received over 100 emails on this issue, the most I've gotten any other issue in this city. So that really shouldn't stop. You know, you have, as constituents of us here, you have that right to keep informing us of the issues of this city that affect you. And I can guarantee you, if I get an email that says there's a problem that's happening in the city, we will address it. Even if there's, I think there was an issue a couple of weeks ago where racial profiling may have been an issue, that came across my desk. And you know, I was very willing to address that issue that's going to happen. So don't be afraid to stop emailing us. Keep the communication alive, because I think as long as we keep this communication alive, there's no reason to fear this evening. So again, I'm probably going to vote in favor of this, just because it's a better tool, and we owe it to keep our city safe. Thank you.
Mr. Calendine, or Mr. Trembada.
Thank you, your honor. I think a lot of you know me already. I had a heavy heart coming to tonight's meeting. When I say I feel your pain, I can only say that in what I've heard you speak tonight. But I know how happy, or how much my feelings have been enlightened tonight by hearing my fellow councilmen speak to you, look you eye to eye, and promise to you, as a people, that we will support you. I am here tonight to ask Mayor Bowden, also to be a member of the task force. I pledge my support to the citizens of Danbury, as well as the whole population of Danbury. I know my police department, I know many of the officers, I know many of the top officers, and I know exactly what type of men and women they are. There aren't going to be sweeps. I feel it was such miscommunication, and so unfair to you, to live in the fear that you have since probably October, and probably still feel tonight. I hope that some of the information that you receive from my fellow council members will be disseminated to the people that I hope are still outside today and tonight, worrying about the issues that we spoke about. Again, what you said tonight hit me, and hit me hard, but what we said as a council, and our promises to you, I hope you feel the same way towards us as we feel for you. There is going to be mutual trust in this community. You have pledged it by most of the council members here tonight. And remember, if there is a problem, we are here, we are going to have a task force, and we can't abandon any program that we, it is not a contract, we can abandon it at any time. I pledge my support for all of you, and I hope you trust in your council people tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Trembada, would anybody else like to speak on this issue tonight? Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, your honor. You heard the information that was discussed in the last council meeting on January 14th, and I mentioned that I was very concerned about the process. Well, I still am. It's wrong. The task force is something that should have happened prior to us voting on this agreement. Public discussion and debate, if you count today, I think we're up to one and a half hours. I really don't see the need to rush in to this particular type of agreement. The second point, mentioned by the chief a couple of different occasions on record, stating that there'd be no change in level of service provided to the citizens of this town with or without this agreement. We're already doing a lot of this program. It just isn't formalized with this particular agreement. And one of the biggest concerns I still have is we still don't have the MOU. I mean, to me, it's kind of selling the soul of the city sight unseen to the feds. We have no idea what that information entails. A couple of boilerplates, it's not enough. Not only that, I still believe that it's divisive, and it puts a stigma on the name and the city of Danbury. And I still won't be supporting this agreement.
Thank you, councilman. Further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I have, Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, your honor. I'll be as brief as possible. I'd just like to echo what my fellow members in the council have said, that we're proud of our police department, they do a good job. We're proud of everybody that's here tonight, that were able to speak their piece and tell us what they feel, and what we should be doing or maybe not be doing. I have been born and raised in this city, I'm not going to say how long, but I have never, I can honestly say, never seen the city divided as much as it is over this one issue, and it really needs to stop. And I think if we have to take the ball and run with it, that's what we're going to do. We are here for you people, we're here for everybody. We can do this thing, and we can make it work, but we have to work with each other to get it to work that way. Thank you.
Visconti, further discussion? At this time, I'm going to pass the gavel to Mr. Cavo, I have a few quick remarks per protocol, I won't keep him much longer, but, look, I don't think I can add any better than what the council has said tonight, what our speakers have said tonight, I think all of them have had interesting points to make. And I just want to emphasize a couple of key things, and reiterate a couple of key things, and I think in some ways I speak for the entire council, if I don't, you can throw your shoe at me later and yell at me, but I think I do, in the sense that when I say that this city, and this common council, and certainly this mayor, are incredibly proud of our rich multicultural heritage. We're proud of every single one of our residents, young and old, that reside within our 44 square miles. And I think the issue that you've heard a lot discussed tonight has been communication, that there's been a lot of miscommunication, misinformation, there's been people, ginning people up on the sidelines, saying that, you know, there's all kinds of things that are going to happen with this program that frankly are not going to happen. And so I just want to be clear and say on the record tonight, as a member of this administration, the leader of this community, that we are targeting this training for our police officers, specifically two, maybe three detectives, depending on our manpower, on criminal activity. I just want that clear. Criminal activity. And of course, I think everybody in the dais here, and I know the folks that are here tonight, the people that are watching on TV, believe that both sides of this issue have got to find common ground. There's no question about it, and I was sort of joking with Councilman Rotello a little bit earlier when I mentioned that... that, you know, we're not talking about politics tonight, but he did touch on one point, and that is that the federal government has made an absolute disaster of this issue, and the federal government has a responsibility to fix it, and fix it in a way that is the most responsible. Fix it in a way that makes us a lawful community, a community that respects law and the rule of law, and fix it in a way that also says we're a welcoming community, and all are welcome past the Statue of Liberty. So, in the spirit of that, part of the MOU, and I know our council does their homework, they've read the MOU that's been presented, requires a steering committee to be developed. There's a steering committee that must be in place to oversee the implementation of this agreement. That steering committee must meet once a month. There must be feedback provided to the steering committee about the program, data collected to protect and safeguard the constitutional rights of everybody in Danbury. What I propose is that we'd expand that steering committee to include the task force that looks like it's gonna be about three hundred people. But that's okay, because the more people that we can carve in and bring into the tent, the better communication that we can have, and that people can get the right information at the right time, so they understand what the impact of a particular program may or may not be. So we'll be working over the next couple of days, hopefully by next midweek, to put that body together per the MOU, and assuming that it passes after the vote is taken, and then get that up and running as fast as possible, so the right kind of communication can get out, so people have a chance to ask the questions that they need to ask and to understand, so our police have a conduit in which to communicate out to the community at large. With that, I certainly appreciate everybody that's here tonight. I appreciate your thoughts at the microphone. I appreciate and respect your First Amendment right to speak your mind, to state your opinion, just as I appreciate the folks that are outside the building tonight expressing their First Amendment right as well. Indeed, that is what this republic is about. That is what this grand experiment was built on, the ability to state your opinion without fear of any kind of retribution. So I salute everybody that's been here tonight. At this time, seeing no objection, I'm gonna call the roll for the vote, seeing no more further discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
McMahon. Negerchef. Johnson. Trembetta. Sorry? Caladino. Perkins. Or Visconti. Chaney. Estisito. Sadi. Cavill. Lo Cello. Diggs. Keishel. Arcanti. Curry. Knapp. Levy. Riley. Seaberry. Stanley.
It would be nineteen ayes and two nays. Motion passed. You can talk to us individually. Okay. No, we got a couple more items there, Mr. Visconti. Thank you. Item thirty-- where are we? Item thirty and thirty-one, where I consent. Madam Clerk, item thirty-two.
Ad hoc report grant you dry address.
Mr. Cavill.
It was made, seconded by Councilman Rotella. All those in favor waving the reading of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay. I have the motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, item thirty-two, please. Excuse me. We waived the reading of the report. We're on item thirty-two. We're on a read and vote. What's your pleasure, counsel? Mr. Levy?
Motion, we accept the report as presented and renumber the-- take the appropriate action.
It was made to accept the report as presented and renumber the streets, seconded by Mr. Perkins. Discussion on this issue. Seeing none, then I'll try your minds. Alls in favor of renumbering the streets, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, that would be Councilman Negerchef, and Councilman McMahon in the negative. Sir President, Department reports, please.
Your Honor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the departmental reports, as all members have copies, and copies are on file in the city clerk's office. Second.
It's made, seconded by Mr. Rotella. Any discussion on the department reports? Mr. Levy?
Your Honor, I don't-- I don't agree with you well.
Mr. Miguel, please.
I'm with the chair. I pledge the report. He has a lead in the zoning office for power and crime and he's created-- Assistant Unit dealing with a matter of--
I think that's what Mr. Miguel is saying. We've been kinda batting that around the council the last couple of years and trying to get that into codified, but you wanna expand a little bit on that, Mr. Miguel, for Mr. Levy? Mr. Miguel, could you use the microphone? We're still in, being broadcast.
Yes, it's presently a zoning order for the parking, no parking on front lawns. We've been doing it right along, but the action that we take on it is a tag to remove it off the front lawn, and if the person doesn't move it, we have to send out a warning letter. Then the warning letter doesn't get acted on, and it's a thirty-day wait before they can actually do anything, and then again, it comes from Mr. Harity's office.
Through the chair, yeah, do you have recommendations as to how to alleviate the problem, or to empower you, or whoever you would consider someone that could carry out what we need to eliminate the problem?
I believe Councilman Chaney's made a note to Corporation Council regarding this, and Corporation Council, just recently, I just got an email from him as to how we might handle this through our police officer that we have on board.
Do I understand that in the mean that there's a remedy to the problem is in the works, and can be forthcoming, or do you need a committee from the council or something to?
Well, actually, I think I'd like to have a committee from the council on this particular issue.
Why don't we have Mr. Pinter do some investigatory work and see what some model ordinances are out there that might beef up our parking ordinance and get them out to everybody? We could form an ad hoc next meeting. Does that seem acceptable?
I just wanted to read your reports, I read all the department reports, and acknowledge when you have a problem, I guess that's where we look for it and to alleviate it. So--
I think that's where we need to go.
If you think that's the proper approach, we'll move in that direction.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chaney's.
Thank you. Just to sound this issue, follow on Larry Miguel's question. I did email Les Pinter the same very same question, but a year ago, I brought this same matter to the council for which a police officer was assigned to the unit. And I think if Les can explain that email to the council, whether or not it can add in, because you kinda made it believe they could already do so.
I think the issue is not-- we do have the police officer, Officer Utter.
I think it's already in the ordinance, so they can already do it.
Yeah, but I think Mr. Miguel is asking for a higher fine, that the fine isn't high enough.
Hundred dollars, right?
Yeah, it may be dictated by statute, but that's what we're gonna go investigate and see what we can do. Didn't we look at that?
Eight dollars.
We'll still look at some other, maybe potential ideas.
I do have another question now. Now with Larry, though.
Just, you know, on that point, I just wanna direct Mr. Pinter. Let's check to see if we can-- one of the things we did with the litter was we were able to give powers of enforcement to the unit officers. Is it possible that we can give powers of enforcement to the unit officers on parking, so it's not just up to Mr. Utter to write the ticket? Let's take a look at that. That may be able to expand our enforcement activity. In terms of writing the ticket, we can't raise the fine. Go ahead, Mr. Chaney.
Again, again, I also read the public works report, and I just wanna commend the public work director for his report in his department, that the way his report was actually laid out was very clear and precise, so I just wanna thank his department for doing such a good work with his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney's. Further discussion? Seeing none, then I'll try your minds and accepting department reports. Alls in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This time, I'll extend all committees, and I will extend all committees, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn made by Mr. Cavill, seconded by Mrs. Seaberry. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn.